...February 11, 2014, special meeting of the Springfield City Council to order if you'd rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undegraded, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Edwards.
Here.
Alderman Simpson.
Here.
Alderman Turner.
Here.
Alderman Lusko. Alderman Canman.
Here.
Alderman Joe.
Here.
Alderman McMiniman.
Here.
Alderman Tylin.
Here.
Alderman Dove.
Here.
Alderman Griffin.
Here.
Mayor Houston.
Here. The next item on the agenda is docket number 2014-065, a resolution certifying certain aspects of the Abraham Lincoln Presidential Library and Museum for emergency passage. The Chair will entertain a motion to place Agenda Number 2014-065 on emergency passage. It's been moved and seconded for emergency passage discussion. The reason that we're asking for emergency passage is that the Presidential Library Museum is submitting a grant, they have a time deadline, and this is just something that certifies their attendance. Further discussion? There are no further discussion. All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. Voting is now open. Okay, motion passes ten zero. The Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn the special meeting of the City Council for a public hearing on the budget.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn the special meeting of the City Council for a public hearing on the budget. All those in favor of the motion say aye, those opposed say nay.
Aye.
Motion carries. Is there anyone who would like to address the City Council with regards to the budget? If not, we -- excuse me. Alderman.
I'd like to.
Okay.
I can't assist them.
I guess you can, but it's for the public.
I'm speaking for the public.
Okay.
I have had several calls from individuals with regard to the library and the extending the hours, and although none of them are here, I feel like I am in a position to represent them. I've asked your Budget Director through the Coordinating Council to find the money for a Library Assistant One, a Library Assistant Four, and a part-time security officer. And again, I'm not asking for me. It's $144,683. I could, of course, go through the budget and pick out line items, but I'm not sure that the Budget Director would agree with them. My expectation is that he would find the money and, with your consent and approval, to fund these three positions so that the library can extend the hours for the citizens of Springfield who paid our salaries. They deserve this.
Mayor.
Thank you.
Alderman Canman.
I might ask a question of the Alderman. What, was your -- by doing this, we would be able to extend the hours to what extent? I mean, in addition to what they are?
To the extent that the Director would be able to. It would be up to her in terms of the staff. She asked actually for five individuals, and I told her that I would do my best. I couldn't guarantee five, but I would work toward three, and that would be a Library Assistant Four, again, with the Youth Services Division, a Library Assistant Two with Circulation Desk, and then a Security Officer One.
Okay. Well, I'm wondering if Director Huntley could either now or some -- or maybe next week, let us know what your -- if these three positions were added to the staff, what would the, then be the additional hours the library could be open?
Alderman, I would have to look at each of these positions because all of them are public service desks. There's one public service desk that would not be covered by these three, and that is Reference Services, which covers the second floor and Sangamon Valley, so I think we would really need to look at what would be the best hours. I know there's some members of the public who would like us to be open later in the evening because of the meetings that we have in the Carnegie Rooms, but there are also people who would like us to be open earlier in the morning. So we just would have to weigh that and see which, how we could work this out, and if this would give us enough actual coverage of those desks to add three or seven or five hours or nine hours a week, depending on what would be.
Currently, you're --
I'll look into it, though, and get back to you before next week.
Currently, you're open until eight o'clock on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, and six o'clock on Monday and Friday?
No, it's Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, we're open until eight, Thursday and Friday until six. And we open at ten every morning, six days a week. I will get back to you, though, if that's okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, that's an additional comment. I think there is broad support for extending the hours. I think as time goes on, there'll be greater and greater need to use computers at the library. Home computers tend to crash at inconvenient times, and research needs to be done, and the library will more and more serve that purpose for our community as a place where you can use reliable computers for research and for Internet and for communication. So I completely support Alderman Simpson's goal to extend hours into the evening on Thursday and Friday nights and also on weekends, to the extent it's possible.
And I do appreciate the support from all of you. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
On the second item related to the budget, last week, there was quite a bit of commentary on talk news radio having to do with IMRF, and several constituents have contacted me both by phone, texting, and email, and they're concerned about our IMRF funding and how it relates to the budget. And so I just wanted to go over very briefly a need for our Budget Director to give us another report on IMRF funding and the funding level. It did drop from 100 percent fully funded in 2003 to 62 percent funding level in the most recent report, and that means that the amount the city owed IMRF climbed from the city owing IMRF zero dollars in 2002 to the city owing IMRF $92 million in the most recent reporting period. Now, I think Mr. Louis Casiba, the Executive Director of IMRF, was on the radio today or yesterday talking about this situation. He mentioned a very significant rise in the assets of IMRF due to the market climb for the last 12 months, but let's recall that those ups and downs are ups and downs in the market. We haven't had a 10 percent correction since the Great Recession ended, and we've had a 5 percent decline just in the first one month plus of this calendar year. So that's a number-one item having to do with the budget. But in relation to that discussion on the news talk radio with Mr. McCarty, one of the reporters asked Mr. McCarty a question. If we got so far behind on IMRF, why are we giving raises to our city employees? And then it turned from the union contracts to non-union contracts. And I want to -- and Mr. McCarty, and Bill, you made an incorrect statement in, on the radio regarding non-union employees. You said that there was a series of years there when they received 0 percent increase, and so the record needs to be corrected. At no time in the last 12 years, according to the report that was provided by Human Resources, by our Human Resources Negotiator, Stephanie Barton, did I see a zero year of increase for our non-union employees. It's always been, there's always been an across-the-board increase. And I just, I, we went through this a month or two ago, and I just want to go through it again. Last year was a 3 percent across the board, the year before that, 3 percent, the year before that, 3 percent, the year before that, a half a percent, the year before that, 1 percent, the year before that, 4 percent, the year before that, 3 percent, the year before that, 3 percent, the year before that, 3 percent, the year before that, 1.5, 1.5, and 3.5. When you compound it out, it's over 33 percent in 12 years, which equates to 2.75 percent per year for our non-union personnel. So the main point being made here is that increasingly, this city is mortgaging itself to our pension funds, but we continue to pay raises to our employees, and that practice has got to be reviewed and brought under control. So this all has to do with our budget, and that's the reason for discussion at this public hearing. Like I say, there was a number of our city residents that are following this issue, and I expect them to continue following the issue. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Yeah. I hate to say any, because it is a public hearing, and this is where we allow for the public, but when you just look at numbers, like we just heard, those are numbers. What wasn't worked into that equation were the same time we ask our employees to take non-paid furlough days, which affect their pension, givebacks, which affect their pension. If you get a half a percent raise and you're asked to take four or five days of furlough and you're really not asked, you're told, that affects your pension as well, that affects your raise. So I think all of that stuff needs to be laid on the table when we talk about this kind of thing. I just wanted to say that.
Well, in reply, I agree it all needs to be laid on the table, but let's remember, and the State Journal Register just put out a statistic over the weekend asking about, you know, for the public to comment on what's happening to our median household income, not just in Sangamon County but across the country. Our median household income for Sangamon County, and it's not much different for the city, is $56,000. The median pay we provide for our city employees, the median pay level per employee is now reaching $75,000. So the city government is extraordinarily, has extraordinarily generous pay levels for our city employees, and the public is aware of that. And that's in addition to the health insurance that you, that we provide with the city that you don't typically see in many of the public sector jobs, in addition to 12 days sick time and vacation days that climb to 30 days per year after 30 years of service. And so the public is looking at that, and we have to be mindful of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Hearing no further discussion, I would accept a motion to adjourn the budget hearing.
There's a gentleman in.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
I had signed up to address the council during the regular meeting last week. I wasn't called on. I was just kind of wondering what the deal is. I don't have a matter about the budget, but I did sign up for the regular process.
I believe it's on the agenda for our Committee of the Whole.
I signed up to speak at the council meeting, not the committee meeting.
Well, I apologize. Committee, council. I thought it was committee. We thought it was committee, Mr. Rush.
It said council on the top, and council meeting at the top. I use the regular form off the Internet.
I don't think there's a difference. There's not a difference between the forms. I apologize for that.
On the agenda, it says citizens can speak, so.
Actually, I don't think our rules would really be one to speak in committee at all. I'm outside of the council meeting. Being one of the rules, procedure.
Can I speak?
Yes.
Okay. This is very unusual for me. Bruce Rushton, I think it's 1340 South Sixth Street. I've never done this before, but I don't feel I have any other alternative, having tried everything else. On October 4th, I submitted a FOIA request to the City of Springfield for police documents. The police union fought the release of these documents, and on October 11th, Judge John Schmidt ruled against the union, and the city promised me the documents. It's a voluminous record, and I understand it's a voluminous record, and I'm not looking for it, you know, right away. The law gives you five days, five business days. That can be extended by another five days to 10 business days. It has today been 80 business days. I have in my hand here, if you want to read it, several promises from the city employees to provide me these records written over the months. I never get them. Most recently, the city has stopped responding to emailed queries about what is the status of my request. I'm here because I don't want to sue you. The city has already been, what, somewhere north of $150,000 in legal fees and settlements and FOIA matters. We don't need another lawsuit. I would like my documents, and I'd like a date certain on when I'm going to receive them. And that's all I have to say. Is there any questions?
Thank you. If there's no further discussion, I would accept a motion to adjourn the budget hearing.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to adjourn the budget hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Is there any other business to come before the special City Council meeting? If not, I would accept a motion for adjournment. Second.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion, there are no discussion. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.
The Committee of the Whole for February 11, 2014 is called to order. Roll call again, please.
Alderman Edwards.
Here.
Alderman Simpson.
Here.
Alderman Turner.
Here.
Alderman Lusko.
Here.
Alderman Canman.
Here.
Alderman Joe.
Here.
Alderman McMiniman.
Here.
Alderman Tylin.
Here.
Alderman Dove.
Here.
Alderman Griffin.
Here.
Is there a motion to approve the January 28, 2013 Committee Minutes?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Treasurers' Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Corporate Fund Monthly Cash Report for the month of January, we had a beginning balance of $8,36,685. Receipts for the month of January totaled $7,924,845. Disbursements for the month totaled $10,789,739. So our ending cash balance in the Corporate Fund at the end of January totaled $5,171,791.
Is there a motion to approve the Treasurers' Report?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. The next item on the agenda is the Office of Budget and Management Contract Report. There are five items in the first section of the report and four items in the sealed competitive bids section of the report. Are there any questions or issues?
No issue. Just a question was, the landscaping, is that for downtown or? The first one on the sealed competitive bids, the trees and shrubs, is that what we're doing? Is that for downtown?
That's for tree replacement for the electric division. It may be related to tree trimming or work that has to go on, you know, that we have to remove trees or do work, so.
Mr. Hobby, while you're there, could you comment on the following two competitive bids having to do with Burrwood Group Palo Alto Cluster, and then the one after that is Newberry Group Barracuda Email Archive?
Yeah. On the email archive, it's a system that will automatically archive all emails that are, go through the CWLP system, and basically, it ends up being the entire city, because all, everybody has CWLP email addresses. So it's a way to archive those off so that they're stored and kept and retained for an appropriate amount of time, so that even if they're deleted, they're still retained. And then the cluster system is, I believe, it's a data storage cluster. It's basically just maintaining information that we had, what we use for, on all the servers for city data. It's just an expansion of that system, but I will look it up here.
Chairman, any other questions? I see the email archive, but then there's, you said there's another one for data collection? Which one? Or is that the same contract?
No. The Barracuda, the Newberry Group Barracuda Email Archive, that's an email archiving system, and that's all it does. But then, across all the city's systems, we store a tremendous amount of data from public works to pictures to all the construction, all the files, so that's part of the cluster bid.
Speaking of the archiving, go ahead.
Actually, I'm going to correct myself here, because I'm getting out, it's the Palo Alto Firewall device. It's, that cluster is, actually goes on the outside to protect us from outside for potential viruses, hackers, and it's a, it's a Palo Alto, that's a Palo Alto cluster.
So the data is kept outside of the city government?
Well, it's to protect our data from outside users. It's what, it's the firewall that goes between us and the Internet.
You said the email archive keeps the emails for an appropriate period of time. What is that period of time?
Yeah, I believe we have to keep it for one year. So right now, we've got it set up, I believe, where we're going to retain everything on there for at least 15 months.
Is that, is that a state law or what?
It has to do with retention records.
Local Records Commission.
Oh.
All right, thanks. Mr. Director, Hobby, could you comment more on that archiving? If, let's say you ask Director of City Water, Light, and Power, if you delete one of your emails, will this Barracuda email archive still capture that email and save it in a different way?
Yes.
So every email that's produced or written by a city employee will be saved?
Yes.
Is it subject to FOIA, then?
It would stand, it would follow under standards, FOIA, I mean, this is a way to guarantee that we have it, that somebody doesn't accidentally delete something. Everything will be stored there. It'll still fall under, I'm going to look at Corporation Council to correct me, but standard FOIA would still apply. If it's irrelevant to that topic, it would still apply. If it's, you know, an email that's just, you know, considering, you know, kind of work-in-progress documents, you know, those are not subject, because they're not final documents, but any final documents, any decisions would still be subject to review.
So this should be full notice to our city employees that before you push the send button, you better be ready to stand behind the email.
Every email will be stored.
Any further questions on the contract report? We'll go on to the ordinances table or remaining committee. That would be ordinances 2011, 104, 2012, 123, 2012, 226, 2012, 376, 13, 128, 13, 174, 13, 193, 13, 250, 13, 260, 13, 266, 13, 376, 13, 397, 13, 457, 13, 469, 13, 470, 2014, 022, 2014, 024. Are there any requests to pull any ordinances or to make motions on any ordinances? That being the case, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, ordinances for committee consideration. Madam Clerk.
2014-039 is an ordinance authorizing execution of amendments to pricing schedules with and payment in an amount not to exceed $250,000 to AT&amp;T Corporation for telephone, send tracks, and long-distance services for the City of Springfield.
Move to consent. Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I have a question, Chairman. I don't know whoever would be the appropriate city person to answer it, but it just seemed a little confusing, because the heading says that this is an ordinance to authorize execution of amendments to pricing schedules, and then in the description below, it says this is an extension of the original agreement. So it seems if it's just an extension, the prices would be the same, but, you know, maybe you can explain that, what's going on here.
Alderman, the pricing is the same. It's just they extended the pricing schedules to us and then for another year. So it's the same as it has been for the last several years.
The pricing schedules, the schedules are the same, but they're being amended?
It's just being extended.
Okay, the amendment is simply the extension of the same price.
Yes.
That's all. Okay. Thank you.
Need further discussion?
And it's $250,000, that's per year.
All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any against? The motion passes.
2014-040 is an ordinance authorizing the purchase of personal protective equipment consisting of pants and coats from Five Alarm Fire and Safety Equipment in an amount not to exceed $237,382.50 for the Springfield Fire Department.
Move to consent. Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Just a quick question for the chief, if he's here. Anyone from the fire department? I was just wondering, is this to, you know, just to replace worn-out equipment, or is this come because there's been an advance in the equipment, and this is, you know, more protective, and we're replacing it for all firefighters?
This is more of a replacement program.
Okay.
We've had the same company for about the last five years. We're just renewing the contract, you know, for the dollar amount.
I know, I believe there's been a lot of advances over the recent years in the type of protective, you know, gear that, for firefighters, but what you're saying is this is not a step up in, this is just?
No, this is just still with our replacement program. It would be good for the next, I believe, two years.
Okay.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion placed on consent, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any against? The motion passes.
2014-041 is an ordinance authorizing execution of an agreement with and payment in an amount not to exceed $200,000 to Industrial Organizational Solutions Incorporated, doing business as IO Solutions Incorporated, to furnish, develop, and administer entry-level and promotional exams for the police and fire departments for the Office of Human Resources.
Move to consent.
Second.
There's a motion to place on consent and a second. Any discussion?
Just a question for the chief, a quick one. Who did the, this is some, the same person doing the entry exam, same entity, but it's a different one doing the promotional exams? Who did the promotionals? And do we, do we think this new company is going to do a better job?
IO Solutions has performed our entry-level exams over the last two rounds of testing. We did have a different organization conduct the promotional exams.
Who was that?
It is called Resource Management, and with this RFP, it is our intention and desire that we were hoping to get one company to be able to perform both of them. So that's how the RFP was written, and that is combining the two into one organization in this ordinance.
That we got a better, we save money, get a better financial deal that way?
Yes. Yes. They have served us well over the last couple of years. They're very reputable in the field and, again, can combine, and so we're not dealing with two different organizations and two different ways of testing for those types.
Okay, makes sense. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any against? The motion to place on consent passes.
2014-043 is an ordinance to increase the number of Class E liquor licenses by one for Soil Restaurant Systems LLC, doing business as Dotty's, located at 2520 North Dirksen Parkway, Space A.
Move to consent. Second.
There's a motion and a second for consent. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Motion passes.
2014-044 is an ordinance to increase the number of Class A liquor licenses by one for Galaxy Gaming Incorporated, doing business as Galaxy Gaming, located at 1044 Stanford Avenue.
Move to consent. Second.
There's a motion and a second to place on consent. Any discussion? I'll just make a brief comment that both of these liquor ordinances, I believe, are to permit a video gaming parlor to come into being. That's the extent of my comment. I'll be voting no next week. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any against? The motion passes.
2014-045 is an ordinance to increase the number of Class A liquor licenses by one for Gold Dust LLC, doing business as Gold Dust, located at 2309 South Dirksen Parkway.
Move to consent. Second.
There's a motion and a second to place on consent. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Motion passes.
2014-046 is an ordinance to decrease the number of Class A liquor licenses by one and increase the number of Class AA liquor licenses by one for J CJ Beverages Incorporated, doing business as Kraft, located at 430 East Monroe Street.
Move for consent. Second.
Alderman Tylin?
Yes, I don't know if anyone here can answer the question, but when they're moving to the AA for the packaged liquor, is it because they are brewing beer at the bar, specialty craft beer, or is this just resale, retail alcohol?
I don't know for sure, but my understanding was that they were, they don't brew their own beer or this.
That, well, that's what I was getting to. I was trying to understand, if they were one wanting to package their own, similar to Obed and Isaac, to sell specialty beer, I just personally have a thing against double A licenses. I'll be voting no on this and I'll be voting no next week. In the case of a specialty brew, I can see the reason behind it, but I, before I voted, I wanted to know what it was for.
Well, I think, I think the reason they're asking for a package, you know, to sell packaged liquor is because they sell, they're, what they're, you know, what their basic selling point is, they have all sorts of different kinds of beers that you can't find anywhere else, and probably their customers have been asked, you know, they want to take something they can drink at home, they like it, they like what they tasted, and I think that's what's going on here. And I guess Alderman Joe agrees.
That is correct. That's what they're doing. I mean, it's a craft beer, I mean, they're selling craft beers from all over the country. Correct.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Signify aye. Any against?
No.
The motion passes?
2014-047 is an ordinance to decrease the number of Class E liquor licenses by one and decrease the number of Class N liquor licenses by one for Jared Dennis, doing business as Porter &amp; Hazel's Delicatessen, 106 West Jefferson Street.
Move for consent. Second.
There's a motion and a second for consent, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any against? The motion passes?
2014-048 is an ordinance to decrease the number of Class E liquor licenses by one for Cara Mongolian Noodle Incorporated, doing business as Cara Mongolian Barbecue, 3431 Freedom Drive.
Move to consent. Second.
There's a motion and a second for consent, any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any against? The motion passes?
2014-049 is an ordinance to decrease the number of Class D liquor licenses by one due to failure to renew by O's Golden Dragon Incorporated, doing business as Golden Dragon Restaurant, located at 425 North Grand Avenue East.
Move for consent. Second.
There's a motion and a second for consent, any discussion? All those in favor?
I have a question, Todd Oliver, looks like he's not here, or maybe Mr. Greenberg can answer the question. I noticed there's quite a few of these on the agenda where the license is being decreased because the licensee failed to renew. Just wondering, do we, when, that's because the person fails to pay the fee, I imagine, do we follow up and, you know, call the person up and say, maybe they just forgot, is this, do you, do you really want to lose the license or?
I don't know if we do actual telephone contact, we do send them a letter.
Oh, okay.
I'm 95% certain in all these cases, they've gone out of business, yeah.
Oh, is this one, the Golden Dragon went out of business?
Last time I drove down, the brand had shuttered.
I knew that the one on Hayes, Porter &amp; Hazel's, did go out of business, they just decided they don't want to sell alcohol. Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any against? The motion passes?
2014-050 is an ordinance to decrease the number of Class D liquor licenses by one due to failure to renew by Ping Jiang, doing business as Gourmet House, located at 3165 South Dirksen Parkway.
Move for consent. Second.
There's a motion and a second for consent, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any against? The motion passes?
2014-051 is an ordinance to decrease the number of Class D liquor licenses by one due to failure to renew by the Bleachers Grill LLC, doing business as the Bleachers Grill, located at 2936 South Sixth Street.
Move for consent. Second.
There's a motion and a second for consent, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any against? The motion passes?
2014-052 is an ordinance to decrease the number of Class B liquor licenses by one for Cap's Corner Incorporated, doing business as Cap's Corner, located at 850 North Dirksen Parkway.
Move for consent. Second.
There's a motion and a second for consent, any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any against? The motion passes?
2014-053 is an ordinance accepting bids and authorizing the execution of contract UE 141170, generating facilities scaffolding with Brand Energy Services LLC, for a three-year term in an amount not to exceed $3,300,000 for the electric generation department.
Move to debate. Second.
There's a motion and a second for debate, any discussion? Alderman Simpson?
Can you kind of explain this scaffolding?
Scaffolding, it's inside the boiler of the units, it's not standard, I mean, they actually build it from the floor up, so basically all the boiler tubes hang inside the boiler, so they have to build up from the bottom up so that they can get in around the tubes to make repairs. So, it's, it's kind of a unique situation, but whenever we have to make repairs inside the boiler to certain sections, we actually have it scaffold up, and the boilers are anywhere from seven to 10 stories tall.
So, the scaffold, it comes down, it's taken down once the repairs are made?
Yes.
And what happens to it?
This company takes it away, I mean, this, they come set it up and take it away. We call them, they come and install it. They do this specifically for utilities, they come and set this type of scaffolding up inside of boilers or other tight locations, so they assemble it and build it, and then they take it down and take it away with them.
So, would it be cheaper for us to just buy it and then have them come and build it each time there's a need?
Um, you know, it's not cheap trying to stay, maintain it too, I mean, you carry the liability of having it, you know, we've looked at this, this is their profession, this is what they do every day. I don't even know if they would even assemble scaffolding that we would have, because that, you know, was it bad scaffolding or was it their installation? You know, they carry all the liability and the professional liability of making sure it's done right.
Okay, thank you.
Further discussion? If not, then all those in favor of the motion to place on debate, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any against? The motion passes?
2014-054 is an ordinance accepting bids and authorizing the execution of contract UE 141171, general repair and maintenance at the power plant with Henson Robinson Company for a three-year term in an amount not to exceed $2,250,000 for the electric generation department.
Move for consent. Second.
There's a motion and a second for consent. Alderman Simpson?
Two and a half million dollars is a lot of money. Do we, we know what their employee makeup is at all, or do we even monitor or care about that in terms of them hiring minorities and women?
You know, they're, they're the only local vendor that bids on this. This type of repair is time-sensitive, because if we lose a pipe or, you know, some type of water valve at the plant, the longer it takes to get that on, the longer our units are offline. So, you know, this is time-sensitive to us. As far as how, you know, their makeup, we will do everything to comply with, with what we can do legally with city code and, you know, bidding processes, but outside of that, I don't know that we have a lot of legal grounds to put mandates on them.
And I don't necessarily mean mandates, but of course, can Corporation Counsel maybe look into something in, in terms of the contract, encouraging them or something?
Okay, and I think it's standard in all of our specs that we, and I understand there's a difference between affirmative action and nondiscrimination, we have nondiscrimination language in all of our specs, my understanding, but we will, we will look into that.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? There's a motion and a second to place on the consent agenda, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any against? The ayes have it.
2014-055 is an ordinance authorizing the execution of a letter offer for extension, approving a one-year contract extension and authorizing additional funding in the amount of $125,000, under contract number UE 121202100, Ready Mix Concrete with Henry Nelchens Sun Company and Capital Ready Mix Incorporated, for a total amount payable of $375,000.
Move to consent. Second.
There's a motion and a second for consent, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, state aye?
Aye.
Any against? The motion carries?
2014-056 is an ordinance authorizing additional funding in an amount not to exceed $100,000, under contract number UE 140304, with Martin Equipment of Illinois Incorporated, for maintenance and repairs of heavy equipment, for a total amount payable of $350,000.
Move to consent. Second.
There's a motion and a second for consent, any discussion? There being none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any against? The motion carries?
2014-057 is an ordinance approving a professional services agreement with CDM Smith Incorporated, in the amount of $64,644 for a water demand analysis for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move to consent. Second.
There's a motion and a second for consent, any discussion?
Madam Speaker.
Alderman Simpson?
Um, can somebody explain to me what exactly this is going to do? 057.
What this is doing is looking at projecting our demand out to the future. The last time we had this done was in 1991, and it only looked out through 2025. Well, now that's, you know, 11 years away. And one of the things, when we looked at trying to find a supplemental water supply the last time we met with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, they suspended our license and said, the letter said, "The demand analysis as well as alternatives must be updated." So, this is following through to be able to get back into the process of looking at getting permitted for alternative water supply.
Do you, do you know what the results indicated in 1991?
I mean, all it is is a demand analysis, they just project how much water we're going to use, and then that water, that prediction is then goes into the whole process of what alternatives are the ones that can meet that demand.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Griffin?
Are all these things on about the same timetable, Eric? I mean, it seems like every time that we talk about the concept of a water supply and are we going to get a lake and are we going to pursue something, it seems like every, every step, any, every one of these kind of steps is at a staggered deal, so there's always something lacking. By the time we get that done, the other one's lacking again. So, we're never really going to get to ask the question, can we build another lake or not? If that's not the case, what are we going to do here?
Well, about four years ago, we were asking the question, and our question was answered with a lot of questions.
I'm sure.
And we did a lot of question answering. Since then, they've asked us to do this, you'll see another ordinance coming up shortly where we're going to update the cost of all the alternatives to Hunter Lake, and that will meet, you know, the other requirement of the Corps. We'll look through all that and then we'll go back to the Army Corps of Engineers and EPA and, you know, have a, you know, ask them, you know, with us, what do we look at as alternatives, do they have any other direction they need to go, or can we pursue, you know, the most viable alternative? So, they, they want this updated, and like I said, right now, Ted is working with another vendor to get updated costs to do, to look at the other alternatives that we have out there, Havana Lowlands, Illinois River, and so we're going to get an updated cost of those, because I believe those were last updated in 1998, I believe, so.
But by the time we get done with them, they'll be, well, now the impact, the environmental impact study now is four years old, now we have to do that one again, and these aren't going to do at the same time, so every time that we ask them the question, they come back with the questions for, well, you do them, we've only done this for 40 years, so if you can do it 10 more times, we'll give you an answer.
There are, there are parts of the environmental impact study that will have to be updated, not the entire part, some of it won't change, like, you know, is there any historical artifacts buried, you know, that doesn't change, but we may have to study certain wildlife things, but we're not going to study that until we get a permission from the Corps to say, yes, pursue that alternative. They point us in another direction, we don't want to spend money studying environmental impact study on Hunter Lake if they're directing us to go to another, to another area, so.
They've been, they've been waiting to instruct us for 40 years and they just keep giving us excuses why they can't instruct us, so.
I, I feel your frustration, and I think at this point, our mission is, we need to find an alternative water supply.
300%.
And that's why we're pursuing this, and we have to go through the processes, so it's not the most favored one, but we're going to make sure we try to dot our i's, cross our t's, so we can get there.
Mr. Chair.
Director Hobby, comment, the facts keep changing on water usage, correct? Because, for example, we're not going to service Chatham, our utility usage with the new power plant has a different rate of water usage, and we've incorporated households are incorporating water savings into there, so you got to, factors going each way on this, so it is important to update the water usage.
Yeah, I mean, when you look at a supplemental water supply, you're talking, you know, the existing lake lasted from the 1930s to the present time, so we want, and we want to have that type of forward-looking, you know, ability, the current demand only went to 2025 and it was done in 1991, so as you said, there's been a lot of variables that have changed since then, and there's assumptions that were made that are probably no longer valid, so we need to update all those to make sure we have, as we know the world today, a valid prediction.
Mr. and Alderman Simpson?
Um, at the end of the four months, when the, when the study is done, can you provide this council with a short and dirty synopsis of what the report, what this new report says versus the comparison of the last one?
Yeah, we will definitely provide you a copy of the report, and we'll put together, you know, one-page summary, but we see it to be.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Alderman Cameron?
Yeah, I just, I have something to have. I think we just did this study on the, using the Aquifer to the east as an alternative. Did I just hear you saying in response to Alderman Griffin's question that we're doing other, you're also in the process of doing studies of other alternatives right now?
When this was first done, there were multiple alternatives looked at, including the Sangland River, which is the one that Aquifer, that we just looked at in this last study, because that was the one that the Corps and EPA directed us to look at, because we'd bought the gravel pit, and that's the study came back and said, you know, during drought condition, we only have 1.9 million gallons a day available, which our needs were around 10 to 12 or higher. So, that, in a sense, is, we will present that data back to the Corps and EPA, my feeling is that one's probably off the table at this point. So, there are still other alternatives, including the Illinois River Valley, Havana Lowlands, each of those have potential issues. Havana Lowlands has a Imperial Water Authority, I believe, it's Imperial Valley Water Authority, that has, you know, some rights in there, so we've got to meet with them and see, you know, what potential legal issues would be attracting water, so those are the other alternatives to Hunter Lake.
So, they're, the, what, the Imperial Water Valley, you said, or the?
Yeah.
And, and what was the other one that have?
It's, it's the, well, the two alternatives are the Havana Lowlands and the Illinois River Valley, which is west of Jacksonville.
Okay. The, this water demand analysis that was done in 1991, what did it project would be our demand for water in 2014 or 2013?
I don't have that right in front of me now.
Okay, the reason I ask is, it's my recollection that these demand analyses in the past have been way off, that they projected much greater demand than when we came to that point in time than actually what, you know, the demand was. Is that correct?
Um, I, I can't verify that, I know there's been assumptions made in some of the analysis too that is not true, so that assumed certain consumption would go away, that has not gone away, so.
All right, well, if you could.
There's, there's many variables there.
Could you get me the, the demand analysis, a copy of that that was done in 1991?
I, we should be able to get you a copy of that, but, you know, at this point, we don't consider that a valid demand analysis anymore, because, you know, usage patterns and appliances have changed, so that's why we need an update.
And this demand analysis, is there going to be any study of how we might be able to affect demand through water conservation, maybe through incentive rates that encourage consumers to conserve, some other cities and municipal water providers have done in other parts of the country?
Um, that is not the scope of this one, that is an entire different study. I will tell you, demand response on water is difficult to do, I mean, people need to drink their water, they need to shower, they need to bathe, we do have a block that does increase the first unit's water cheaper than the second, than the remaining units, but, you know, basically, you're starting to ask, you have basically penalty rates for people for watering their lawns and things, I mean, that's, that's what you're getting to, and, you know, that's, that's a policy decision that I think everybody here needs to look at, is if we want to go to punitive rates. Also, you have to look at, is that enough of an impact to mitigate the demand? Because we've implemented no watering restrictions and still have had, you know, severe low lake conditions. lake conditions.
In electricity, the cost of providing electricity varies based on time of day. Does that apply for water?
Our electric rates don't vary with time of day.
But I mean, I understand maybe our rates don't, but the cost to provide it, there's peak times of the day for electricity, but I was wondering whether that's also the case for water or not.
It's really not that simple a question, because majority of the water costs are fixed costs, so they don't go away with, you know, demand going up or down. The incremental cost of making a unit of water doesn't really vary with the time of day, but the incremental cost to make the next gallon of water is fairly low cost compared to the fixed cost of maintaining the entire infrastructure.
The reason I ask is some, I think some electric suppliers or cities have some kind of incentive rates where if you, during, you know, during certain times of day, if you decide to run your washing machine or, you know, have your machinery.
There are electric time of use rates, but that shifts demand from one time of the day to another on water. If we have a low lake condition, whether you use it during the middle of the day or the middle of the night, it doesn't really change the impact. For an electric, we may be short of supply during the middle of the day, but we'll have extra at night. That does have an impact.
So that's why I ask, so that principle really doesn't apply with water? Not, you know, I don't think so.
Thank you. Alderman Edwards.
Yeah, I'm kind of like Griff. We've been doing this dance for forty years. We've been doing it for the time that I sat on here, and four months after I got on here, I really started pushing the issue, and was told that within four months, we'd have an answer, and that was ten-some years ago. Maybe we've been doing it wrong. Maybe what we need is an ordinance that says, we're going to build Hunter Lake, and we have an eight-two vote, and let the dance really begin then, and you guys come back to us and tell our constituents how much it's going to cost us to build that lake, and we'll just move on from there, and we'll go on offense instead of going on defense. This is ridiculous. Like Griff says, if we keep asking and asking and asking, maybe we just need to come in and say, our community's come to the conclusion that Hunter Lake's the best deal for us, and we took a vote, and it's eight-two, and we're asking for the permit to build the lake. Now, either you're going to tell us yes, or you're going to tell us no. We've been doing this dance for, you've been involved in it, Eric, it can't be fun for you guys either, because every time we get going, we head in a different direction. So maybe I should ask corporate counsel just to draft an ordinance to approve Hunter Lake. We'll see what the vote comes out, and in the meantime, you guys can get us what it's going to cost the citizens in a water rate to build a lake, and we'll move on from there. And while we're moving on, the Corps can stand up and take notice, and so can the EPA that says, this community's going to build Hunter Lake, and we'll go on from there. You guys have not got much support in this, and I've been one of the guys saying, let's look for alternative water source, but you know what? Let the community decide. Let them decide whether we want to do this or not, and maybe the best thing to do is put an ordinance together that says, we're going to proceed with Hunter Lake, period, yea or nay, and then they can do the dance, and they can come in and say, no, we're not going to let you. Then they can tell the constituents why they're not going to let us, instead of us in here trying to figure out how we can appease them. I mean, I'm just tired of it.
Well, my comment to that would be a couple of things. One, if we showed that commitment as a city to move forward with Hunter Lake, that certainly would perk up the ears and eyes of the permitting authorities, because when we go by gravel pits and we have public comment that we're not, we're not sure we're for it, they ask us those questions.
Would you please draft that ordinance, Mr.?
We will look into that.
Now, the second part I will say is, even if we pass that, it won't change the permitting process we have to go through.
Yeah, but it shows them we're serious, it shows them we're moving forward, and you're going to have your up or down vote, and we're going to get this thing going forward, one or the other. And when we do that, we need to have the discussion on how much this is going to cost our constituents to build. That's a big-time deal, because I've heard everything from one hundred and eighty percent to two hundred percent in water rates. You know, I maybe shouldn't throw those out there, but they're out there. Let's just figure out what it's going to be based on today's cost, and let's get going and move this forward, and let's get their attention. It's about time.
We can provide that cost to you.
Good.
I mean, one hundred and eighty, two hundred, I believe is quite high compared to what it'll cost, but it'll be a significant rate increase. But, you know, standing here as the person at the utility, I believe we have to be very concerned about a hundred-year drought, the fifties drought repeating, and not being able to provide water to our consumers.
Well.
And that's a mission that we take very seriously.
And I understand that. Nobody's pushed harder and harder than me. These people have, but nobody's pushed harder than me to get this resolved and get it answered. So if we draft the ordinance, and we start that discussion in earnest, you're going to know what we're going to do, because the ten of us are going to vote on it, and you're going to have a pretty good clue. And the constituents can start weighing in once they see the rates, and we'll start moving this thing forward. I'm just sick every three or four years, us coming in and spending half a million dollars on another study and doing their dance. Now, they can do our dance, and either they're going to say yes, or they're going to say no. Now it's time to push the issue and move it forward.
Well, you know, half a million dollar study is, or in this case, it's a sixty-four-thousand-dollar study is.
And the last one's done in nineteen ninety-one.
Nineteen ninety-one. I think what you're trying to do is gather all the facts before we try to make any kind of decision. Doesn't make any sense to have a vote without all the facts, so I'd be a no vote for that.
Well, that's fine, it can be a no vote, but let's move this thing forward. I've been sitting here for twenty years watching this fiasco.
Talk about a half-billion-dollar project, you don't just shoot from the hip. I'm still talking, Alderman Edwards.
How many dollar amounts have we spent totally on studies?
Alderman Edwards, you're out of order. You can't override people just because you want to talk.
Well, you keep talking, who cares?
I think I am the chair, and you are done talking, Alderman Edwards.
Alderman Simpson.
I would like for us, if I could sponsor that ordinance, I would love to do that. In addition to what the cost is going to be, if you're going to provide that, you also need to come back, what, what the advantages are to this community for an additional water source, because I think the citizens need to be able to weigh the cost versus the, the need, so.
And we can certainly provide that, because there, there are pros and cons to every alternative, and, you know, we're, we're trying to, what I look at is, I am very thankful for the Spaldings and the city council and the mayor that set us in motion to build this lake. This community's very much benefited from that for the last eighty years. We want to make sure we offer that same opportunity to future citizens in Springfield.
Sure, knowledge is power, and when we look at other places around the country that are experiencing drought conditions, and even with the weather changing as it is, I mean, we've experienced cold that we've never experienced before, something's going on, and I think we need to be ready, and we need to be able to give the citizens an informed choice.
Alderman Turner.
I haven't been here as long as Alderman Edwards, but I can understand his frustration, because I'm frustrated too, and I think that the information that you would provide us from this study, especially with the added components that Alderman Simpson just mentioned, would be extremely beneficial, but I don't know that we would be able to intelligently vote on an ordinance to move forward with Hunter Lake until we have that information, so I don't know, I, I would think that we would need to get that information back from you before we move forward with voting on the ordinance related to moving forward with the lake.
My general recommendation, if you would like to hear it, would be that we would pass an ordinance, say, we're going to aggressively pursue an alternative water supply, because ultimately, the Corps and the EPA have final authority on which one it is, but, you know, we, we need to have commitment that we want to pursue one. Now, part of that process may be providing those costs and everything, getting everybody to understand what the impact is on the community as a whole, because it, it will not come for free, it will come with a cost.
Right, but, that's two, that's two separate ordinance. The ordinance that you're talking about is, is moving forward aggressively on identifying alternative water source, which to me is a more generic ordinance, but an ordinance specifically saying we want to move forward with Hunter Lake is, is something a little bit different.
Got Alderman Griffin and Alderman, let's go.
Yeah, Eric, we talked about that before, and like you said, talked about alternatives, and if, if the power goes out, the alternative is to use a battery lamp, you plug in your generator, you do whatever you do. We turn on the faucets and there is no more water, what's the alternative? There, there really is none.
Nothing good.
At that point, the city shuts down, totally. So that's, that's, like you said, that's not an option. Running out or putting ourselves in, not letting ourselves be out of a position where we haven't taken care of that or haven't provided for the people this, again, it's going to be a negative thing of, no matter what we do, it's going to cost money. Understand that, but nowhere near the negative of, if we turn on the pipes and there is no water left for the citizens of Springfield, that's one hundred percent unacceptable. I agree with you a hundred percent.
Alderman, let's go, and then Alderman Cameron.
Eric, scenario, this council supports it, our Army Corps of Engineers approves it, the citizens approve it, and we go to build it. What are the projections on how long it would take before that lake would be completed?
I can get you that. I mean, it would be a multi-year project, but I don't have, is it eighteen months, is it thirty-six months? I don't have that data in front of me, but, you know, there would be preparation, there would be a dam that would have to be built, and, you know, you'd have to prepare the lands, and there's also some, maybe some roadwork that would need to go on, so, you know, there's houses in the area that would need to be removed, so there's, there's a lot of preparation work that would go in.
It doesn't need to be real specific, but could you kind of give us ballpark sometime then?
Yeah, thanks, get that.
Alderman Cameron.
I just had, you said just something just now, it's up in the final, I think you said it, it's, it'll be, in the end, it'll be up to the Army Corps of Engineers what alternative water source we use, isn't, it, doesn't the city council and the city government have some say in that, and then the, the Army Corps will say if, you know, if it's too environmentally hazardous, or, you know, this or that is wrong, we can't do it, but we, don't we have some say in what our alternative water source is?
We certainly have the right to pursue one. Ultimately, they will have the permitting authority, and they have permitting rules on whether this alternative is the one they see as the one that meets their guidelines of how they do permitting.
Right, but there may be more than one alternative that would meet their permitting requirements, is that correct?
Potentially, but they typically will rank them, so.
So you mean, as a practical matter, they are making the decision?
Yeah, as a practical matter, yes. I mean, they could promise for something, this council still has to approve.
Right.
Any action we would take to proceed.
Thank you. Alderman Tyler.
I have to say that I definitely understand and agree with Alderman Edwards and Griffin. The process, just the time that, I've been here four years less than Frank, but it's been very frustrating from day one. It seems like the EPA and the Army Corps of Engineers don't want this game to end. They just keep asking more questions, they rejected everything Tom Skelly turned in with another question, and every time we thought the finish line got close, they'd move it again. It was like Lucy grabbing the ball from Charlie Brown. And I think if Frank will take, you know, if you'll take co-sponsors on that ordinance, Frank, I'm all with you. I, I think that we need to switch from using a pea shooter to maybe grabbing a bazooka and get their attention.
Whose attention are you trying to gather, Alderman?
EPA and the Army Corps. They seem to, they, they just won't finish this. They, they won't come to a conclusion.
Mr. Chair.
Alderman Simpson.
And I think a lot of that has to do with us. They're looking at us for some concrete direction, and we're not giving them, and I agree with Alderman Edwards. Let's just, let's just give them an option and move on from there, because, you know, as long as I've been sitting here, we've been going back and forth, what's, you know, is it going to be gravel pits? Is it going to be the lake, or is it going to be something else? And we've not come to any consensus in terms of what we want, and maybe that's it. Maybe they're saying, well, they don't even know what they want.
Well, I think.
So maybe it's time to, you know, do what that proverbial, or get off the pot.
You know, this, the city council keeps changing what it wants too. I mean, the investment into the gravel pits was moving in one direction, and so it makes sense to.
But I think that was a stopgap, that, I think.
Well, I'm going to finish what I'm saying too, on this situation.
I'm sorry.
It makes sense to examine and carefully study all the alternatives. You don't, you know, make a five-hundred-million-dollar decision without all the facts, and the facts keep changing, and I think this is what this water demand analysis is all about, updating the facts, and just to shoot from the hip, just to kind of rattle EPA. Well, who do you rattle at EPA? They got a different cast of characters every ten, fifteen years, and so caution is, makes sense when you're spending a lot of money. Alderman Edwards.
We, I can give you studies that start way back in nineteen sixty and go all the way to the present, so to say that we're merely spending sixty-three thousand dollars, that's his time. We've spent, and Eric, we probably got documentation somewhere before Craig Burns gets out of here, maybe he can find it for us, the total dollar amount that we have spent on public hearings, documentation, questions, studies, we've pretty much done it all over a matter of forty years. It isn't just this one. We, and we're not just, with all due respect, Mr. Chairman, shooting from the hip, it's pretty clear that we've been led to Hunter Lake, and Hunter Lake is why we've spent twenty-six million dollars on property. We didn't spend twenty-six million dollars on property for Hunter Lake because something else was better, we spent it because that's what the utility has basically said they would like for us to do. And some of us got in the way and said, you know what, I think we can do this and we can do that. Well, it's obvious we can't do that. We're going to spend additional monies to do this, and we might as well move it forward and have a vote that says, okay, we've made a decision, we've reached it, we've included the public in it, they know what the cost is going to be, our phones are going to ring, and we'll vote yea or nay to move forward to this, so that we can tell EPA, we as a collective group, and some of us won't agree with that, some of us don't like it, but we as a collective group have reached a decision that we'd like to pursue Hunter Lake, and it all comes.
Sorry, happen, Frank?
Huh?
Is that what previous councils have done? We would have walked the land if we would have been here.
Exactly.
Every council changes.
I know, but what I'm saying is, Joe, let's go. Let's, let's push it forward and send a clear message, and let's get some resolve going in this thing. Huh?
You got a year and a half to do, and this group would change by then too.
I know, but, Joe, you've seen me, let's go. I'm tired of the utility, have to spend money after money after money. If everybody wants them to do that, then we'll do the dance another ten or fifteen years, but I think we need to draw the line in the sand and say, we, we think this is what we want to do, and push the ball forward.
Well, in answer to that, I think the public wants us to make a informed and intelligent decision about spending massive amounts of money, and Alderman Edwards, with all due respect, you have been against Hunter Lake and thought that the gravel pit was the salvation, and we're still evaluating that course of action.
No, we're not. We had the study done. It didn't meet the requirements. He just stood there and said, Eric, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but you just stood there and said, not more than fifteen minutes ago when this whole thing started, that it was one point nine million, and we needed ten to eleven million dollars. Did I misquote you?
No, it, as the results that came back from the gravel pit study, in my opinion, it's no longer a viable alternative.
And nobody pushed harder for the gravel pits and the river than me, but sometimes when you're wrong, you're wrong. And you know what Abraham Lincoln said? You can't blame me for being smarter today than I was yesterday. So we have to move forward, and we have to push to get this done, or we're going to be doing this dance forever.
Well, again, I think you don't want to move forward until you know what the demand analysis is. Alderman Simpson.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Eric, but four and a half years or so ago, when we had the public hearings, and I think I attended most of them, the public consensus was Hunter Lake, wasn't it?
I wasn't in this role during those public hearings, but my understanding is, the public hearings were about the impact of Hunter Lake and the permit to that, so, you know, there are always niche groups that oppose to it, and that's, normally, those are the people that get out and speak. So, you know, you'll have some people that will show up and that'll be against it. You've met some of the individuals here, you know, that have come here and talked over time, but.
There were probably nine, nine out of ten people spoke that.
There were probably nine, nine out of 10 people that spoke that night, spoke in favor.
Okay.
That's what I remember, so.
Yeah. So I'm glad somebody was here to-
Yeah.
To relate that.
For the longest time you have been here. Guaranteed.
Okay, we'll have further discussion on this when the demand analysis comes back. Any further discussion? If there is none, then there'll be a motion to place this on the consent agenda. There was a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any against? The motion passes?
2014-058 is an ordinance approving the location and sketch map of the redivision of lots 1 and 2 of White Oaks Commons located at the northeast corner of Isles Avenue and Veterans Parkway.
Mr. Chair.
Move to keep in committee.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, move.
Alderman Simpson?
It's my understanding that this ordinance and the companion ordinance have some issues with regard to the neighborhood association wanting to stay in committee so that they can further evaluate.
That's correct, Alderman Simpson. This has to do with a commercial redevelopment of an area, which is a good thing. It will have traffic impact on Isles. And Alderman Tyler and I have discussed it impacts both Ward 7 and Ward 8. We've been, we've received some very helpful information from our city engineer Nate Bottoms, and that information is now out there with the homeowners' associations, and they wish some time to review a traffic study that was completed in December regarding the impact of possibly two restaurants and a retail establishment feeding out onto Isles just north of the White Oaks Mall. So if it's acceptable to the council, we'll hold this in committee until the homeowners' associations have a chance to review the, the impact on their, on their residences, their residential property areas.
Chair, who's the developer? Who's the developer?
The property is owned by Quattro, a Chicago-based entity.
Yeah, I think at one point in time, they were going to put, I think back when-
They were going to put a bank.
It was going to be a bank and a restaurant called Old Chicago, and then both of them pulled out at the last moment.
Property north of the mall, that's correct. It's vacant property now.
It's a triangle.
And it was originally divided into two lots, and now they want to divide it into three lots, and therefore, there's some potential increased traffic. And the signalization will have to change. There'll be an additional turn lane on eastbound Isles going off to the north. So Madam Clerk, the next ordinance, please. We're going to hold this one in committee.
2014-059 is an ordinance regarding the variance request of Section 153.158B2 pertaining to lot arrangement for the redivision of lots 1 and 2 of White Oaks Commons located at the northeast corner of Isles Avenue and Veterans Parkway.
Mr. Chair, this is our, so this is our system.
Thank you, Alderman Simpson. That's correct. So if there's no motion, it just stays in committee?
Correct.
Let's, the next ordinance?
2014-060 is an ordinance vacating the alleys in blocks 5, 13, and 17 in Wells and Peck's addition, a portion of the alley in block 2, and all of the alley in block 3 of Mitchell's addition, the alley in lots 1 and 2 of the assessors subdivision, Reynolds Street between 6th Street and 7th Street, Mason Street between 6th Street and 7th Street, Reynolds Street between 9th Street and the proposed railroad in the Springfield, in Springfield, Illinois, to St. John's Hospital in exchange for the proposed right-of-way required for the Springfield Rail Improvement Project.
Vote to consent.
Sorry. There's a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yes. Now, this is actually, is, I believe, in Ward 5. What, could somebody from the city answer whether this is, it says it's for the right-of-way required for the Springfield Rail Project? Is this for 3rd Street or 10th Street?
10th, this is right-of-way for the Carpenter Street underpass.
Oh, for the Carpenter, this is just for the Carpenter Street underpass?
Correct. And we worked out a deal, basically, with St. John's to our advantage, requiring the right-of-way, and then there's some street closures in areas that they wanted as well. That parking lot, that is to the east of 9th Street.
I'm sorry, Saint, these alleys are being vacated, and they're going to be, are conveyed to St. John's?
Correct, as well as they're conveying right-of-way to us for the Carpenter Street underpass. So it's basically a trade. Actually, it comes out to our advantage.
Oh, it's a, it's a, okay, it's a swap.
Yep.
Do you, do you have a map that you could provide to Alderman showing what, what's going on here? All right, that'd be great. Thank you.
Any further discussion? There's a motion and a second to place on consent. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any against? The motion passes?
2014-061 is an ordinance accepting the lowest bid and authorizing execution of contract number PW141283 with Perry-Broughton Trucking and Excavating Incorporated to furnish construction on drainage improvements throughout the city in an amount not to exceed $480,036.67.
Move for consent.
Second.
Motion and a second for consent. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any against? The motion carries.
2014-062 is an ordinance to increase the number of Class E liquor licenses by one for the Dew Chili Parlors of America LLC, doing business as Dew Chili Parlor Number 2, located at 1216 South Fifth Street.
Move for consent.
Second.
Motion and a second for consent. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any against? The motion carries.
2014-063 is an ordinance approving the appointment of Robert A. Brash as Department Manager of Administrative Services for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for debate.
I would second the debate.
There's a motion and a second for debate. Any discussion? Mr. Brash, did you care to address the council?
Alderman McMenamin asked me to make a small presentation tonight, and I have done that. Please know that I will be brief. I can appreciate the time. I've provided all of you with an abbreviated work chart for the Department of Administrative Services. I hope you have that.
Is that placed in our mailboxes?
Yeah, we tried to put it somewhere in there.
I think it, I think it is important that you understand what the Department of Administrative Services is. It is kind of a smaller, less public department. It does some things, well, let me just begin. This division is responsible for 10 functions that generally speaking do not fall under generation, distribution, finance, or the finance divisions. Within the boxes, we can talk about those functions if you'd like to at some point. I think they're pretty self-explanatory. Within the boxes, there are headcount numbers from the fiscal years 12 and fiscal year, what will be fiscal year 15. As you can see, there's a significant reduction in the number of employees between those years. The shaded boxes represent those departments where the functions in that area have been or will be soon absorbed into other functions. So I think we're making, let me say that when the mayor asked me to come, it was to manage this department and to make it more efficient. Director Hobby gave me time to look at it from a fresh perspective and asked me to do that, to do exactly that, to make changes, not just to look at the old way of operating and to make it more effective. We've tried to do that, and I think we're succeeding. The budgeted headcount has fallen each year of this administration. In the last 24 months, 26 employees have left for one reason or another. Six have been replaced. That's a net decrease of 16% in two years, and conservatively, it's about $1,005,000 per year savings. We have transitioned Energy Services to the Transmission and Distribution Department. In doing that, we eliminated the last non-CWLP lease in an office downtown space. Excuse me. We've eliminated Grants Coordinator position and filled the ESO Manager position but did not fill the result vacancy. We have absorbed the HR liaison duties into administrative staff. Risk management duties are currently in transition to the Security Department and will be absorbed without additional headcount. The utility property manager duties were divided between Land and Water Resources and the Superintendent of Public Servi, excuse me, Superintendent of Property Services. And through layoff and attrition, Administrative Services has eliminated five managerial positions since 2012. We've audited the various departments' inventories and, in some different departments', management procedures and practices. In, in the preceding year, three Administrative Services departments had no lost time injuries for 365 days. That's an improvement in their record, and I think that's an important achievement. We are still in the process of reorganizing this division, and there will be further opportunities. So, I'm open for questions.
We can go around the horseshoe. I just want to make, I want to make sure I understand. You have reduced the headcount from 149 when you took over down to 110. Is that correct?
The 149 was headcount, headcount in the budget year when I came. I came at the end of that budget year. The budget year, fiscal year 15, will be 110. Yes.
So-
And if, and if we move the garage, it will be 89. So, yes, that's correct.
Thank you, Mr. Brash. And let's go around the horseshoe. Alderman Edwards?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I've got a couple of questions. So how many of these individual positions were through attrition? People retired, and they just weren't filled?
Most, let me say most. We have, since I've been here, we laid off three. There have been some termination and resignations, but most of these have been through retirements.
So were they asked to retire, or they just voluntarily retired?
I've never asked anybody to retire.
Okay, so they voluntarily retired, and you didn't really have a lot to do with that?
That's right. That's right. But we could have replaced them.
Pardon me?
Might, we could have replaced them, because there's a savings.
And so, all intents and purposes, you are confirmed by this body, so you've been on contract?
Been act, not on contract. I'm a city employee.
Yeah, but you, you don't get benefits, to my knowledge.
No, I don't get benefits.
He does get benefits?
Temporary.
He's an employee.
He's acting.
Okay. So with everything you've said, your work is done. Why should we affirm you to continue?
Oh, I think there is work to do.
You would say that?
Yes. Yes, I would.
Okay. I personally feel that CWLP is really top-heavy with managers, superintendents who report to superintendents. It's just really convoluted with top-heavy management. Nothing against you, but I can't, I'm not going to vote for you, because I think something different needs to happen in CWLP. The other thing is, you've been in this position almost a year and a half?
Nearly two.
Nearly two. Do you live in the city of Springfield?
I do not.
Thank you, sir.
Alderman Turner? Alderman, let's go.
I've spoke with Eric Hobby, and he said that you're doing a wonderful job for the utility. I, too, have observed and had interaction with you. You're very responsive. I appreciate that. I think the city's getting a lot of knowledge in your employment. I appreciate it. And I'm going to support you tonight 100%, and I thank you for what you do for us.
Thank you.
Alderman Kamen?
Thank you. I thought I heard you say that since you took over as acting director, there's been a net decrease of 16 employees. Is that correct?
26.
26. Well, was that in a particular division that you said there was a net decrease in 26?
That is across the Administrative Services Division. So in many of the functional areas, in all of the functional areas, there have been decrease.
I'm sorry, I'm not, the total, in the Administrative Services, that's the, what you run, there's been a, since you started, there's been a decrease of how many employees?
In the last two years, there have been 26 employees.
So it's 26. So what was the 16 number?
That was the percentage of overall.
16%?
Yes.
That's correct. Decrease, is that what?
Yes. That's exactly.
All right. You, I heard one, Alderman being interviewed, about your appointment coming up, and stated that you had brought more money into the utility than your, than you, than your salary or something to that effect. What, what is he, what was he talking about? How have you brought money into the agency?
Well, I indicated that from the positions that have left, there is an annual savings of 1.5 million.
Okay. That's just, 1.5 million from the, having that many less employees?
That's correct.
And you're, are you also in charge of the leases? Is that correct?
That's correct.
And have you generated more income? Have you been able to increase the amount of income generated from the leases?
I can't lay claim to any responsibility for increasing the lease price or, or the income from that.
What was the last thing you said?
For the income from leases.
The, now, the Energy Services Department, that was for people that help consumers to conserve water and electricity. Is that correct?
That's correct.
The Consumer Services, what is that? What do the people in that department do?
There were two people in that when I came there, there's one now. Basically, what she is responsible for is updating the CWLP website. She creates all of our, all of the mailers that go in, CWLP Mail, multiple newsletters and, and communications. She is also the one who responds when, when you email the, and I'm having a hard time with the word, the public email address at CWLP. She responds.
Who is that person?
Ray Bonn single Williams.
Yeah. And who's the, so you're the division manager right now. Who's the number, is there a number two assistant manager under you?
No. The, I would not, I would not put it that way. There are divisions that report directly to me, and there are divisions that report to Scott Slagle, who's the property manager at Lake Services. He also reports to me.
He's, okay, you mean, okay, all these under Property Services, all those boxes under that, report to Scott?
That's correct.
And then you get the people on the either side report, those boxes report directly to you?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alderman Joe?
Yes. Mr. Chairman, so let me ask you, out of the utility, I mean, we went through and spent a lot of money on the MAXIMUS study when Mayor Houston first came into office. Are we following the MAXIMUS study report in terms of your division of the utility?
That's a difficult answer, because they, they had no actual comparison in the MAXIMUS study. I believe, and I have not read it for you, I admit, but I believe that they said in the Lake Services area that we could use with less support people. And, and I believe the mayor's response said that, well, I don't want to speak for the mayor. We are down one person and those support people that we're for, and we are at three.
Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Tyler?
I have no questions.
Alderman Doug?
Aye.
Alderman Griffin?
I have no questions, Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brash.
Could I have just do one follow-up?
Go ahead.
Just who was running, before you came on board, who was running administrative? Who was running the department?
The position had been vacant, I want to say for two years. Bill O'Rourke sat in my chair under the previous administration, but he retired.
So Bill O'Rourke, he retired, and then there was nobody in this position. So who was actually running the department between when Bill O'Rourke retired and you became acting director?
Eric Hobby.
All right. Mr. Brash, thank you for bringing the organizational chart and for explaining the nature of your duties. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, we need a vote on the motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question I'd like to ask you on this Corporation Council, if I might.
Go ahead.
I just, section 33.017 of the city code, I was reading it, and it says, "The Department of Administrative Services shall be headed by a department manager appointed by the general manager, the general manager of CWP, with the approval of the mayor and the advice of the consent of the city council." Now, there is no general manager at CWP. So, isn't he the chief engineer?
He's, both hats, I believe.
Okay, so did he appoint, because the ordinance we got says that the mayor appointed Mr. Brash.
He's an obituary. It's got to be by member of the council or the mayor.
The ordinance says the head, the department manager is to be appointed by the general manager. That's what the code says. I don't know what the approval of the mayor.
Well, I'll have to look up chapter and verse, but generally, you know, under both the consent decree and the section on powers of the mayor, it says, you know, the mayor has the ability, he's the ultimate chief executive officer of the city, and if there are vacancies underneath the mayor, the mayor ultimately has the ability to exercise those functions.
Well, if you could look at that.
There are rules and regulations. Only people permitted to sponsor ordinances are the mayor and members of the city council.
Right, but the code says, I mean, it says it in our code, doesn't say sponsor an ordinance, but it says the department, administrative services shall be headed by a department manager appointed by the general manager with the approval of the mayor and the vice consent of the council. So, I don't know, if you could look into that, Mr. Greenberg. I'd appreciate it.
So, are you saying, Alden Cameron, that the wrong person appointed, Mr. Brash?
Well, I just saying, I'm just pointing out, that's what the code says, and it seems if Mr. Hobbie is the general manager, then he should have, then according to our code, he's the one that should appoint the...
Well, I'm referring to section 32.06B of the city code, says, "The mayor shall exercise control over all appointed offices and subordinate departments," set forth in section 32.05 of this code, "and all officers and employees therein. He shall have charge and supervision over all property, buildings, and equipment assigned to the office of mayor and its subordinate offices and departments." Ultimately, the mayor can exercise any of the functions of the city.
Well, it seems that there's then a conflict between that section and 33.017. So, could you prepare an ordinance so we don't have conflicting mandates?
Well, the statutory interpretation is though no law will be interpreted in such a manner as to have an absurd result. That's why the mayor can exercise his authority, and there is no conflict.
But the code should still, should still not have apparent conflicts. So, I'll convey my request in writing for an ordinance.
There be any further discussion? There's a motion and a second to place this ordinance on the consent agenda.
No, sir. No, sir.
It's a debate. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any against? The motion passes?
2014-064 is an ordinance approving the appointment of Kenneth Winslow as chief of the Springfield Police Department.
Move for debate.
Second.
There's a motion and a second for debate. Chief Winslow, please.
Good evening. Thank you all for having me, giving me opportunity, Speaker Logan today. Alderman Milliman asked me to address the council today and kind of talk about what I want to go with the department. I'll speak broadly because some of the things I would like to do has to be negotiated. As I look forward to the department, what I look forward to doing is, one, establishing, re-establishing and proving them around the department. Anticipate doing this through open communication and setting a high moral and ethical standard for myself as well as the rest of the officers there. With that said, another high priority that we need to move immediately on is minority recruiting. With minority recruiting, we hopefully will be testing this summer or behind the ball. We've got to get moving forward on this. I look to develop a collaborative and sustainable approach to minority recruiting while working with all the stakeholders, not just myself, members of my department, members of the council, as well as members of the community. It has to be a collaborative approach. Not to be lost in minority recruitment is retention. Over the years, we have lost several quality minority officers to other agencies. We've lost some due to layoff notices. They got tired of getting layoff notice and decided that, hey, I'm going to go back to my old job because I don't know their stability there. Another one is public trust. We all know what's happened over the last few months, and we have to continue to reach out to the community. We have to do that through engaging them, through community meetings, through working and developing partnerships with private organizations, the community as a whole, as well as the neighbor associations that are out there. Now, these partnerships will allow us to get a better understanding of what the community needs, as well as give them a better understanding of what our role is. Sometimes our priorities don't match what the community's priorities are. We need to be able to interrelate those and get on the same page with those. Ultimately, the goal is to reduce crime and improve the quality of life for all citizens of Springfield. As far as the department as a whole, operationally, I don't see a lot of changes coming as far as our shift makeup, our structure. With that said, you know, we're down approximately 33 sworn positions over the last several years. At that time and over the last few years, we've concentrated on our core services, which is responding to calls for service and doing follow-up investigations. Some of the special units that we have have went by the wayside. There's not a day that goes by that I don't have supervisors coming to me saying that, hey, I need an extra body to do this, or I need an extra body here, or I would like to have this, or the community member saying, hey, we would really like to expand this program. The reality of the issue is that we're under fiscal constraints and that we have to prioritize what limited resources we have to what we think is the best services out there. We have to continue to embrace technology. We are so far behind, we have to move forward, and we have done that to a certain extent. And with your support in the budget this year, hopefully we'll continue to go forward with field-based reporting and move forward. That is a huge thing for our department. I think it will make us more efficient. It'll hopefully free up some officers' time and be quicker. Other things we need to do in embracing technology is obviously our in-car camera systems, video management solutions that we need to look at. Again, I have a lot of other things I'd like to talk about, but a lot of it needs to be negotiated with the union. The one thing we need to do is the department to be inclusive. I plan to have a management team that is inclusive of everybody. We need to reach down to our officers, our ranking file. Not all good ideas start on the third floor. Sometimes they start at the bottom, and in fact, a lot of times, they start at the bottom. So, we need to be inclusive of that. People have asked me, well, what do you really want to do here? Well, what I want to do is I want to foster a culture of education, of learning, of accountability, of respect, and ultimately professionalism and customer service. I want to be part of the best department in state, and I want our department to be the best department in state. That's basically all I want to say tonight. If you want to have any other technical questions, any of you may have.
Let's go around the horseshoe, starting at Ward 10 this time.
I have no questions, Chief.
Alden Dove?
Aye.
Alden Tyler?
I would just like to state that I plan to support your nomination. I appreciate the job that you've done in the interim and the conversations that I've had with you. I've found you to be intelligent and insightful, not to say that any of the previous chiefs were not, but I definitely have appreciated the way that you have approached the job as chief.
Chief, thanks for talking to the council tonight, and I just want a small clarification as to both you and Mr. Brash. I think I said you have an opportunity to talk to the council tonight, but I don't think I, you know, I said you had to or anything of that nature.
No, you didn't twist my arm there, sir.
Thank you very much, Chief. Alden Joe?
No comment.
Chief, I'd like to thank you for the active role you've played as chief so far. You've come to some of the community meetings in my ward and I'm sure in others, and I find you to be very responsive to the citizens, you know, and probably their number one concern is public safety. I wanted to ask you, some questions have been raised about the street crimes unit. Can you explain what the street crimes unit does and how many officers are in the street crimes unit?
The street crime unit is a big of four officers and a sergeant. It's a proactive unit that goes out there and basically targets criminal activity. Part of their job is intelligence gathering.
Does what with criminal activities?
Be proactive and to target criminal activity.
I'm sorry, be proactive with regard to what criminal activity?
To be proactive and target criminal activity.
Targeting, okay, yeah.
Part of their job is intelligence gathering, finding out who's associated with who, who's hanging around this week with that person. You know, Springfield's, as I refer to it, a large, small town. One week, associates may be in this group, and next week, associates may be in that group. That's part of their job is intelligence gathering. The other thing they do is they're an active force out there. They don't have to respond for calls for service, so when we start seeing a hotspot or a trend developing somewhere, that's a unit that we can put on that to address it and try to solve the problems there. That's predominantly what they do.
Do they predominantly operate in plain clothes or...
Soft clothes.
Not the uniform?
Not the dress uniform that you see, no.
And I guess, just for the record, what steps have you taken since you've been acting chief to ensure that documents are not destroyed or shredded?
Right now, there is a, I believe, the appellate prosecutor's office, and I could be out of term talking there, but there's no documents being shredded at this point in time. If you're referring to the I documents, everything's on hold. Nothing, the MOU that was in place or signed in early April is still on hold, and actually, I'll refer to Rustat to legal for you.
You mean, is there any procedure in place whereby you know just records will be destroyed without maybe consent of the mayor or something of that nature?
Absolutely. He put out an order saying that right after this occurred.
Oh, prohibiting the destruction of any documents, period?
Absolutely.
Is that correct?
Of any...
You said there's an executive order that the mayor put out?
The mayor put out an executive order about the destruction of any internal affairs document would not occur right now.
Oh, just internal affairs documents?
That's my understanding, yes.
Okay, and it prohibits their destruction, correct?
That is correct, sir.
Just one other question. You're, I noticed there's on your resume that you had a special interest in a program called Shop with a Cop. What is that?
Shop with a Cop is something that we do every Christmas. The department goes out and we identify through our partners needy children who don't necessarily have the means to have a nice Christmas, and we try to supply them with some of the essentials, coats, hats, and then some gifts that they get to pick out. Obviously, it's one of the times in the year that we can get back to the community and make a positive impact in the community.
Thank you.
Alden, let's go.
I think you're a good chief right now, and I look forward to working with you in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Alden Turner?
I really appreciated the tennis that you said that you would like to follow for your administration, especially accountability, respect, and customer service, because if I can speak very bluntly, that has not been the effect that the Springfield Police Department has had in every community throughout the city. I saw a significant change with that when Chief Williams became chief, and unfortunately, I have seen a decline in that since he's been gone. So, I really hope that you will work with your officers to impress upon them that they really need to be accountable, respectful, and provide good customer service to everyone throughout the entire community. And when I say this, I'm not speaking, you know, anecdotally, I'm speaking from my own experiences. I've had experiences where police officers have treated me very disrespectful even after I had been elected a Springfield City Councilman. So, I know that it does happen. So, hopefully, that will be something that you will definitely work on. I'm very fond of the neighborhood policing, and you guys do it very effectively. I've worked with several of your neighborhood police officers, and they do a good job, and I hope that you will look at enhancing and, you know, expanding that program where you can. And I also have liked the way that you have been responsive when either myself or people in the community have approached you, and I hope that that will continue, and you will work to, you know, open up things even a little bit more. I know that we have talked about the possibility of making it easier for individuals to file complaints and not have to go through the rigorous process that there is now. So, hopefully, you and I will be able to work together to see that that happens. We also talked about the possibility of having some documents available online, and hopefully, you and I will be able to work together to see that that happens. So, there's a lot to be done. There's, I know that there's morale issues within the department, and there's also issues with morale in the community. And that's not good because in order for all of us to feel safe, we need to be able to work together. So, hopefully, we'll be able to move forward and work together in a very cooperative manner.
Thank you very much, and I do look forward to that, and we're not perfect, but we're going to get better, and we're going to strive to be better. And some of the things you said ring home. You know, when we talk about technology, we talk about some of the things we've talked about in the past. There's a lot we need to do, and part of that is coming up to the 21st century, and I look forward to doing that.
Great.
Alden Simpson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Chief, we've had a pretty good relationship in terms of your working with neighborhood policing. I appreciate that. I, without hesitation, am going to vote yes on your appointment. I hope, though, that you will, as Alden Turner has indicated, work with your staff to make sure that they understand the importance and the value of making those community connections. The program that you talk about, Shop with a Cop, it goes to making our citizens know that the police are their friends and that they should honor and respect them. However, that cuts both ways. The police need to also honor and respect citizens. That doesn't mean be soft, don't cry, but it means be fair. Okay, and as long as you understand that and you convey that to your officers, I think we'll have a much better city. I think training is key, and you mentioned training and some of the things that you're going to do, and being up on the latest methods. I think that's all essential to having a viable police force that citizens can respect. I, again, don't have any problem with your nomination and look forward to working with you.
Thank you very much, ma'am. And again, you hit on a lot of stuff that we do need to work on. You know, enhanced training is something we need to do as a department. It's not cheap. Specialized training that we have to have to provide the best services possible to the community, it comes at a price. Looking down the road from here, over the next eight to 10 years, we're going to have a huge influx of people retiring, and there are specialized positions that we're going to have to come up with funding for to replace those people. So, again, I look forward to working with you moving forward.
Alden Edwards?
Well, you've used trust probably 10 times since you've been standing there, and I think that it's going to be important for this council, and it's because of retirements, because people have left. I think it's going to be important for us to see the type of individuals that you put on your staff and the people you hold accountable. And there's still people on staff whose names have been associated with the shredding, and in order to build that trust with us and the community, I think you're going to need to demonstrate to us what happens, how people are held accountable, and what type of individuals you bring to your staff are going to be an important part. And I personally would like to see, before we vote, some kind of organizational chart like Bob presented with us, so we have a clear understanding of what your needs are and what your plans are and who's going to go where. So, if you could forward that to us, that would be greatly appreciated.
That works, sir.
Thank you, Chief Winslow. We've got a motion and a second to place this ordinance on the debate agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any against? The motion carries. We have now reached, we're moving on to the next item of the agenda. Any unfinished business? Alden Simpson?
Corporation Council, we have a gentleman stand before us asking for some documents. Are we going to be able to provide him with that?
There are several FOI requests, I think. I will be checking, I won't be here tomorrow, but I will be checking on Thursday morning with the attorney to make sure that we're complying with that as soon as we can.
Thank you.
Any further unfinished business? New business? Just to note, it's our President Abraham Lincoln's 205th birthday tomorrow, and it's noteworthy that the American Legion Post 32 will be holding their 80th continuous pilgrimage to Oak Ridge Cemetery tomorrow. Any other new business?
What time is that, do you know?
They head towards Oak Ridge at roughly 10:00 a.m., and then they have a breakfast at 8:30 a.m. to the statue and the burial place at roughly 10:30 a.m., and then they have a luncheon with many out-of-town guests from around the nation, American Legion representatives, including oftentimes the national commander of a $500,000 veterans organization. So, it's a significant way for Springfield to showcase itself as historical and a place of respect for our former president. Any citizen requests to address the committee? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved.